This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we'll call the Missouri Select Board to Order, May 23rd at 6:01 PM. And all three members are present here in Town Hall. The first item of business is meeting with the Council on Aging Chair, Lindsay Berschke. Thank you for joining us. So you're here to discuss the volunteer transportation and grant. And if it works for you.
Such a thing.
If it works for you, would you please present to us what? What you're proposing?
Right, I'll start, Melissa, do they have the chart and the, okay. So I'll start with the chart that looks like this. Which is the last two years of the current van that we pay for Great Barrington for. It's an accessible van, although to the best of my knowledge, we've never had anyone who used a wheelchair, use it, but it's available and that's important. What I tried to, it's, we're billed quarterly. So I've put in the first column, the total round trips, the number of riders and rides for people with disabilities, the number of riders and rides for seniors, and then adding those together, average dollar per ride.
I'm just trying to figure this out, one over 11 means one rider.
Eleven times.
Eleven times, okay.
Exactly.
So basically, it's pretty much always one, every now and then for seniors.
Is a guest at school farm. And we've spoken to him a little bit about this. And the reason he uses it is not because school farm couldn't figure out a way to get him to Great Barrington, because they want him to independently arrange for some transportation. And technically, there's no requirement that the Council on Aging provide rides to people with disabilities, but most jurisdictions that have vans like this, they do. It's just kind of standard operating procedure. We'll get to it later, but the volunteer driver programs generally don't have. They have fewer, yeah, a small number of drivers and they haven't been able to swing it, so anyways.
Excuse me, sorry, what was the difference between volunteer drive?
No, that's not on here. No, later, when I talk about the volunteer driver program. Get into numbers and how that works, but they generally don't, right now, also cover people with disabilities, but our van, the van does.
Okay, so usually volunteer driver programs only offer seniors rides, not disability rides.
Exactly. But councils on aging across the state in larger towns and cities have vans and they govern them. But the point on this is just really to point out, we, seniors are not heavy users. You can see per quarter, sometimes it's one ride or nine rides, 17 rides. It's not a lot of.
Seventy was the high.
Seventy was a high, by a significant percentage. There were a couple of individuals that had health issues, temporary health issues. They weren't driving temporarily, so that's what that was. That could happen anytime. Distinct individuals for seniors is 10, so some used it repeatedly. One of those people is not using it, two of them are not using it anymore. This costs us $5,500 annually.
It's a flat, it's a flat fee?
It's a flat fee and it's probably going up, although we haven't heard. They told us that like two months ago and we haven't heard anymore. If you break it down, total medical trips is about 16%. The rest are shopping trips. Yeah, a lot. And of the medical, most are local to Great Barrington, six were Pittsfield.
Quick question about the $5,500. Is that currently paid for out of a grant? And if it is, what are the? If you didn't spend the money on this van, could it be spent on other things?
Yeah, that, $5,500 and whatever increase we're gonna get has been coming out of the state funds that we get. It goes directly from the state elder affairs to our budget. And we use the whole thing for that. If we didn't need the whole thing for the van, we would need less money from Monterey for our programming.
So in other words, you could, if you weren't using it for this, you could use the money that comes from the state for something else?
Right.
Okay.
And then working backwards, if we had money from the state for programming, we wouldn't need as much from the town for programming. The reason this whole thing kind of got pushed to the front burner for me was the budget meeting that I had as chair with Ivy Marcus and Melissa for FY24 budget. She asked me to look into it, so I'm looking. Doing what I can.
So how long is 43, is actually two and a half years, is that?
It's from March of 2021 to March of 2023, so it's two, two full years.
Okay.
And we pay quarterly. It's, never had a complaint. They had to put up with some difficult individuals, but you know, they didn't really make an effort. The Great Barrington van, so. If we were to switch to a volunteer driver program, and that's this whole thing. Since I've been looking into it, I talked to Council on Aging reps at Sandersfield, at Otis, they do this. I talked to also someone at Andover, because I wanted to get a little bit bigger place. I was a little more sophisticated to see how they did it. But basically, the elements that we have to look at are insurance. There is special insurance called volunteer insurance that the town can take out. Preliminary, looks like it would cost maybe 500 a year. I'm not, yeah, that's a very rough estimate. Otis and Sandersfield don't get additional insurance, they just use what the town has. The, the main way to cover is with the volunteer driver's own insurance. They have to have insurance, obviously, and before we would okay a volunteer driver, we'd need to check out what insurance they have. Another thing that jurisdictions do is have the drivers sign waivers saying that they would not sue the town if anything happened. Similarly, the riders sign something saying they're not suing the town. So we would need legal to look into exactly how to learn those things. But it is done and it is legal. That's that much I know. We would have to determine eligibility and destinations. As I mentioned before, a lot of the volunteer driver programs in smaller towns, they don't provide rides to people with disabilities if they're not seniors. And they also don't go shopping, they only go to medical. Just because that's the number of drivers that they've been able to get. They'd like to do more, but it's been difficult. We'd have to recruit drivers and do background checks. I did an exploratory email about interest in volunteer driving. And in two days, I got 10 people. But some of them were only summer, some of them don't live here yet, you know, it's just an initial.
They weren't solid, yes.
Yeah, they're not solid, but it was definitely a response. We have to set up a very short training. The main part of the training, and this I've gotten from state Zoom presentations, is to make sure the drivers are not doing too much to help the riders. You know, if somebody is really having difficulty walking, we probably shouldn't be volunteer driving now. You know, if they need an arm, people do it, but technically, what they're recommending is that you don't. That these are able-bodied people or seniors who need a ride because they don't drive or have a car. We need a system for reserving, arranging rides. And even Andover just does it with a phone call. They don't have an app, they don't have an online system, it's just you call up. They require two weeks' notice. I don't know if that seems a little unrealistic for some things, but.
Depends on how much, like who they're calling and how readily available that person is. And they have to like wait fairly in twice a week.
So all the programs reimburse the drivers for mileage. And we would have to be able to get accessible transportation when needed. We would want to be able to do that as a COA. So there is a, I spoke to volunteers in medicine, they use volunteer drivers. And they don't have an accessible van, but if they have someone who's in a wheelchair, they call Rainbow Taxi, I think it is, at Pittsfield. And if they two months a ride, sometimes insurance covers it, but we'd have to be thankful for that. I think it's why residents needed that as the COA, since I don't think we want to poke back on what we're able to provide now.
What is, oh, what their, what is in Sandersfield paying? What does it end up costing them?
You know, I don't know, I can ask them that, but they don't arrange vans for people. They don't do anything extra, they just pay mileage.
But I am curious how much that.
One of them pays 65 cents a mile and they only go as far as Pittsfield and Hartford.
Hartford is pretty far, and still the class could add up at 65 a mile.
They could. We only had six trips to Pittsfield in two years.
Right, but you're in the Barrington back, there's enough. I just say, I like, I love the idea, but it's a lot of work. And I'm just thinking, if it only saved us $1,000 after all of the insurance and the mileage and the getting an accessible thing, in the end, would it be, is that?
Right.
And I don't know, I made that number.
In the end, it's not worth it. Because there's a lot of work that has to go on.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
Especially on the front end. And that's where the grant comes in. It just got issued May 19th. And it's exactly what we would need. You know, I would want to hopefully find somebody who is, you know, interested in earning an hourly wage temporarily to research this, figure it all out. And I think the way we can work it is we would keep the van going. We already have funding for FY24 and get this tested and started. And if it works, it works, if it doesn't, it doesn't. That's, that's the basics. Definitely needs a little, you know, more work on figuring out exactly what it might cost. But I wanted to just give you the outlines of how it works and what we need to do to see if we should take the next steps.
One question I have is, what rule do you see the Council on Aging outreach worker have in both setting this up and running it?
If they were in, setting it up, I don't, I mean, she's capable, but she's really working 10 hours a week just to get done what we're doing. And she is interested, if there were money, to help us with this. I would supervise whoever's doing it. But it's more than she can take on with 10 hours a week. And then ongoing, I don't think there's so many rides that we would, she might need a few more hours, but that, that's all. And that would be part of the cost, so that many more hours would be on the budget.
Are you, I mean, like, there's a lot of data you're missing because that's part of the process of researching, but
Right.
if you, if you had to say, yeah, let's do it, or this is gonna be more work than it's worth, or what we'd say, where are you on that scale as of this moment?
Yeah, as of this moment, I love the van, to watch it where. But it is expensive. I mean, we're paying, you know, a lot per ride and most of it is not seniors. I mean, that's another issue. We did approach school farm, one of our board members, who's also a board member for them, to see if they. My question to them was basically, are there grant opportunities that they know of for people with disabilities that could help us fund the van so that it would be a joint effort? And they didn't really get any with that. And I don't want to leave them without what we're providing now. And I think providing less than we're providing now just feels like a really bad option.
This feels, I mean, it's already set up and it's consistent and they have paid staff. I worry that you'd be going backwards with volunteers, you know, people forgetting that they
Yeah.
are supposed to drive someone, you know, it could cause some problems for someone that needs to get to a medical appointment. I'm also worried about what happens to people that aren't completely able.
Yeah.
Because like the person that was going back and forth to the doctor, I don't know what their condition was like. Just recently, I needed to be driven back and forth to the doctor because my right leg was broken.
No, the van, the van drivers are trained to help people who need assistance.
I love the idea, but the question is, if it's a flat fee, no matter how many rides there are, does it make sense if we implement the, basically, I think it's an either or, right?
Yeah.
Either we're doing the volunteer program or we're doing the van.
Yeah, I mean, there may be an option with the volunteer program to set up some sort of less expensive contract with the local taxi service. Probably not with Great Barrington van, but Rainbow Taxi, the ones who, Volunteers in Medicine uses. But I haven't looked into that at all.
Would you, at this point, recommend further researching the volunteer driver program? Or doing, taking any action to move it forward?
I mean, I think some further research would not be that hard in terms of cost. I could go back to the insurance, figure that out. Figure extra hours for an outreach worker, try to estimate the vans and taxis if we don't have someone available. You know, that could happen. So I could do a little bit of, you know, more cost work, but if we want the van, if we want the grant, it's due June 23rd, so we have to, you know, make a decision that we're gonna apply for that, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a maximum of four pages, including the budget, so it's not a big deal, but it still takes work.
Does, does the council, how does the Council on Aging feel about the volunteer driver program versus the current van?
You know, most of the board members would not be involved, really, in either one. So they, they haven't applied. They know that I've been researching it and, you know, that's where it's at. It's just, it is, it's more secure. There's less, there's no moving parts, there's a payment, yeah. But it's, it's expensive. You know, we may use it more heavily in months and years to come. We just, you know, can't really predict that.
So if we, if you apply for the grant and we get the grant and we research it and we decide we're no worse off, right? If we're keeping the FY24 van, is there a downside to applying for the grant? We either don't get it, or we get it, we research it, and then we'll know enough to decide if we want to go forward or not?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I mentioned in the copy, but the grant request form. If we can get this up and running, the grant contract would start July 17th, I think. If we can get it actually up and running by January or February, we have through June to test it out. And then we know if we're gonna end it or keep it going.
You seem to know as much about the difference between the volunteer driving, volunteer drivers versus the current program? And it seems like everything that you've said makes sense, so I'm willing to go for however you wish. Should you want us to approve the grant form?
If you want to try to, I mean, yeah, I think so.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to put any undue burden on you.
I think it makes sense.
I don't want to put any undue burden on you.
Yeah. It is, but it's physically responsible is the bottom line.
That's a good one.
And if it becomes, if it's clear that it's impractical and that saving a little bit of vision, then we'll do it?
If we're scrambling too much for rides and, you know, Catherine is calling volunteer drivers and they're all busy, you know, it's not gonna work.
So would we be paying for the grant writer? Is that, or what's the story?
Should we look at this and see if we can do it or?
Yeah, no, we can. I think if you're, if you were planning on putting in eight, 10 hours, I think it would be fair to compensate Lynn.
Yeah, 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 I mean, we have a budget.
Yeah, we still have some money in there for this year too, so.
Okay. Okay, you got my fees, huh?
I hope it's worth it, I mean.
I'll go to the, there's a bitters conference on Zoom, I'll go to 710 and we'll set up sometime. Because I remember the last grant, I mean, I've been doing a lot of work on it, but I thought that helped a bit, right? It's simpler.
Simple is good. Do we need to vote?
If there's no objection, we'll approve the grant request form.
Yep.
All right, so maximum 10 hours.
10 hours.
Thank you, Lynn, for the presentation and all the data.
And all the work? Am I paying you for that for that?
Checks in the mail.
We gave it the bomb.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night. You too.
Item is discuss making long-range goals and priorities. So I put this on Susan and I talked briefly, Frank, before you're on the board, about discussing things that we want to get done this year. And I just put together, not an entirely complete list, well, at the time, a complete list of some of the things that I have on my mind to do for the board. Some of it is a little bit inconsistent, like I mentioned. Some maintenance and repairs and improvement projects on some of the town buildings, but I didn't include every capital project in some ways, so it's probably just been a capital plan. But I didn't know if you all had other things that you wanted to discuss about this or add to it moving forward.
So the first two things that come to mind is we had talked about trying to do, think about a regular STM possibly in November. So maybe thinking about doing like the bylaw renumbering that, from the bylaw committee in November, instead of trying to tack it on to the end of the endless ATM.
Yeah.
I would also say we need to revisit Boeing, the electoral pick, because, I mean, Marie basically said, if she was our full-time, she would appoint rather than, there's three elections, right, next year? And it's a lot more, it took them two and a half hours for a ballot. Imagine when it's gonna be in March, a lot more than that. There'll be three elections. Two people that said they'd be happy, but weren't counting at this last election, I'll just point out. So I just, I feel like that needs to, maybe the clerk talked about bringing in the people that make the machine to give a presentation, not necessarily at the STM beforehand and talk about how it works and why it's so safe because it's not online, it's not pretty internet, it's a physical box. It's like the scan from does the SAT green, everybody knows it does, and I don't know, we'd say a lot.
It seemed like people were more, weren't worried about the security, they were more, they liked their box.
They like, we can put the box right behind it and, no, and everybody can ding the bell. They'll still, they can do it on their own, they don't have to wait for the constable to do it.
But it also, I mean, that people won't have to be here till 1:00 AM for their ballots. And by the way, I'll point out, there's a lot more hours. We only do 12 to 7, is it, for the town election? It's more hours than that for the state elections. I just think, I don't think it's fair to the people, like, it's hard to get volunteers right now, right? I think it's a lot more work for people and it's unnecessary, right? It's like make work. Somebody likes the idea of being able to ring the little thing, so somebody else has to do a lot more work.
Well, except that, I mean, the majority of people at the town meeting like the idea of ringing the bell. So we gotta vote it down.
Okay, well.
I mean, I.
I know, I'm just, I feel like I'm gonna bring it back until people say yes, because people that are voting against it are not. Here's the thing, it's fine to say that, but where are the people when we ask for volunteers? Right? Like, I like the idea of someone else volunteering, it is not a workable plan, right? I mean, if there were scores of volunteers breaking down the doors going, please, I'm desperate to count votes, just count me in, I don't care that I'll be here till 2:30 in the morning, I'm so out. Then I'm all for it. But that, that is not the reality, right? The reality is people, it's hard enough to get them to come in here and spend two minutes casting their ballot. Because 80 out of the voting population of the town for town election?
And having been a counter, when it is a large election, like say it was a presidential again, they are, they are stuck to counting in here, and if she has, is lucky enough to get multiple people. It's very difficult to hear when you and I are going, you know, Frank, 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 and he's going, Susan, Susan. And you're like, wait a minute, what did you say? And you've got, you know, three other people counting over here. It's, it's not fun. I mean, I understand the principle of it and I know that change is hard, but some, like, I felt like saying, okay, how many people out there don't have a cell phone? And how many people out there have a flip phone? You guys, you guys can vote against the machine. Everybody that's holding a regular phone in your hand, I'm sorry, you've got no excuse. Either that or I want your name right now and I'm gonna call you every single day till you say yes, then you will count the votes. Because it's just not fair. It's not fair to the clerk. It's not fair to the, to the town, I don't know.
Speaking of something that you mentioned on your way to electronic voting, was the renumbering bylaws.
Yeah.
Is actually something that just Donna sent me a couple of days ago and I've been meaning to forward. But I, she just noticed at our town meeting, I had to do that fun thing of changing the bylaw number from 21 to 20, since bylaw 20 didn't pass. And she forwarded a bylaw that a lot of towns has. It sounds like where the town clerk can just renumber bylaws so that you don't have to go through that process. I will forward that to you all. That's what I wrote. And then that may also make the work of the bylaw committee just a little bit easier because they don't have to worry about the numbering. And I don't remember, I didn't even, I still have her email marked as flagged because I haven't really even read it. But I think the gist of it was that, you know, the clerk can't change anything about the bylaw itself, or they can reorganize them as it makes sense.
Makes sense.
But I will add, I mean, I think we should at least explore, it came up late in the processes stuff, but I will add the adding a regular second special town meeting in November or whenever we want. And see what other towns have done to something now because like that.
Another thing that's on my horizon, but I don't know, I don't know that it will come up necessarily before the board soon, but I, I really want to keep exploring. I know we're waiting on a look to see if there's housing that it would be possible to put some type of housing project up on this property. But I'm also interested in exploring what other opportunities there might be in Monterey to foster additional housing opportunities for, sort of for working people, right? We just, we need housing that would be available to people that aren't investment bankers that want to live here and work here. Because, you know, if you, all your folks are elderly, the town becomes morbid. You couldn't afford to buy a house here. And my daughter couldn't afford to buy a house here. You know, the property around the corner for me is on the market for $3 million. I know, and. $3 million. And I'm like, I just would like to figure out a way for us to get more possibilities for housing opportunities for folks. Even like, you know, at this point, two houses would be more than what's available, so.
I added affordable housing or working-class housing. I added affordable housing and, or working class housing. And then also something that made me think of was, in a roundabout way, was the ambulance.
Hmm.
So the assessments from Southern Berkshire and or exploring regionalization with. I always say it's yeah, Mallboro. I'm really in favor of sticking with Southern Berkshire ambulance because. They're just really good and they have a paramedic on staff all the time and the response time really isn't as bad here as it is for Otis or Shamusville. But if, if the assessment's too much, we could explore reorganization.
Whatever the assessment is, it's less than right. That's very sure, but I would like to see.
Well, but there's a point, there's a point. Which is a hundred, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars and we might start talking about joining with New Mallboro or Otis or Shamusville.
Oh, Great Gardens is gonna run their own, so maybe we can pay that.
The other thing that we need to think about is under the warrant, we have the uh, firehouse contract.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the timeline in the eight town regional school district planning board though? July?
I think it's like somewhere in.
I don't remember, I don't know either. I assume they have an idea of it, but I don't know that they've communicated that to us very nicely.
Yeah. Do you remember? Uh, I was just gonna say, can you add on here um? The long term plan for the town hall and storage and staff and office space?
Yeah, record storage.
Anything for you, Fred?
I don't think, um.
I mean, this is not all inclusive, but it's just some of the things that we could work on this year, hopefully as many as we need to, or at least keep. An eye on like the ru- school regionalization and we may not have anything to do until there's a town meeting, but.
That might be a fall, yeah.
Yeah, records, I know. And the office spaces. Okay, great. I mean, I, I don't know what's gonna happen with the transfer station because nobody seemed to be in favor of a paper grow option. Opinion seems to be we're better off just trying to educate people better to throw out less trash because we're already doing well. I, I guess we'll just have to be behind the curve and wait for the tipping fees to go up, so we have to like force people to do it. Because if people don't wanna do it profitably, I don't know, you can lead the horse to water if you can. Show them the head under, doesn't matter. I, like, I, I do think that it would serve us, but I don't think there's the will to do it, so. It won't work unless people.
Yeah, so you're hitting on the purpose.
I mean, it tips, it's just gonna, it's gonna go up precipitously in the next three years or so, so. I, certainly by five years, but it's cause a bunch of the. Dumps are closing.
Yeah. And we're not allowed to just pile stuff in the dump like they used to do? Could we bring it to one central dump? What's the advantage of bringing it all to one central dump? Do they do it then anymore by what it sound like?
A lot of, well, a lot of them in the DC area burned it to make electricity.
Oh, yeah, wait, but a lot of those are closed now.
Yeah.
They're closing, Massachusetts closed them all, they banned them.
They're like, they don't want them to do that.
Too much nasty stuff going up the stack.
So what, what's some of that just gets buried?
I think so.
Covered up.
Landfill, well, what, what isn't diverted? But that, that's why they're like, they're keep lowering, you know, there's a composting thing, so like restaurants and schools and stuff. Have to divert to compost and uh, they keep lowering totally. First, it's only places, but they lost.
Oh, yeah.
They're like, they're chicken it down, down, so less and less and you have to, you hit the marker. Um, I don't know what else we're gonna do, they did, this year, Mathis ban came into effect and. Um, I, I, I don't know, like DEP is gonna keep having to pull stuff because. Like, we just make a lot of garbage, uh, until people choose to stop packaging everything in plastic, I don't know if the problem's gonna go away, but. Really nasty stuff comes when you burn plastic, I don't know.
Well, the other thing is they're trying to recycling plastic, they ran an article.
Yeah.
It, it has the micro pieces of plastic. Which is just another form of poison and it's, they're, you know, it gets lost in the stream.
Yeah, so.
You know, they haul it and leave them out there.
You've got your choices, you can have it in that form or you can have it in the air.
That plastic recycling.
Or maybe we can just quit making it and stop wrapping everything in it, that would be an option, but no. Anyway.
So I will add those things to the list and it just kind of. You know, I thought I would raise awareness of some things I had, some ideas I had and then. We could either have it as a working document or just file it away on the computer, but I will keep an eye on it.
Well, why don't you make it a working document, because there's some of the things, I'm not be happy to take on.
Yeah. Alright, I will, um, the next item on the agenda is the rules of order. So I, Susan and I approved the rules of order last year, I realized as soon as we did, as I, as is always done, that. Certain things were wrong, like I used chair all the time and I said chairman and, and same thing, his own discretion. So I changed those kinds of grammatical things, but I did make one pretty substantive change. Which is that I got rid of remarks needing to be courteous in language. And avoiding personalities and alluding to others by name or motives. And out of decorum speak being uh, out of order.
Which one is that, by the way?
Number eight, because the way that I understand it, the.
Okay, right, there it is.
Massachusetts.
Yep.
Supreme Court said that you cannot. Prevent um, rude speech, rude speech is not legal.
Right.
Right, it's expression of.
Um.
I know.
So.
We have the right to be unpleasant.
Yeah, and I understand, but I understand why.
I, I will say, we have been very fortunate for the last year. It's not, I don't think it's really been a problem, has it?
No, I mean, I think the fact of the matter is you can make any rule you want, but. It won't necessarily prevent people from being rude.
No.
It just.
There's really you can do about it.
No, exactly, and I think we've been fortunate that the, everything has dialed down a little bit and. That has been a problem, yay, let's hope it stays up there.
Yeah, just. Don't get a hold of the, we're, we're allowing. Um, non courteous. We're, we're allowing rude.
Don't tell everybody that.
We're allowing rude speech at this level.
Don't tell everyone, you can say whatever.
Legally, yeah, yeah, it's not our choice.
It's a, it's a shame. But you can cut people off. You can just say, like, we need to move on or whatever, all the questions, sorry, I said that one to you.
Well, yeah.
It, it, you know, you don't have to say it, it's because of, you can say it's because of time.
Yeah. Um, are there any other questions on the rules of order? If not, we'll take a vote on um, and to revise them.
It's the first time this afternoon, I don't know, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah.
I still think they're good, so thank you for the revision, which just started the bucket bed.
Yeah.
And I noticed the same thing, that I'd like, well, you can't enforce it. Telling people they shouldn't be jerks, though, not a terrible thing.
So I would move to approve the amended rules of order.
One second.
Any other discussion? Call a vote, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous approval. That is that, um. Next item is internal transfers.
Just one.
Just one.
Eight seventy-seven from grant writer to legal.
So we.
And this is still at fifty-five thirty, right?
Yes.
So we're gonna be quite a bit under on legal fees, that's what.
That is correct. You can expect at least, this is one, I don't believe, even expect two more.
Yeah.
So I, I'm surprised though, because I thought that the ex, we, we got that extra thirty for the.
That's for the Hume specifically.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So actually.
We went way under on that, right?
That's what I was saying.
Way under on that, yeah, so we're over on um.
But if we're under on that, can we?
Well, so I wanted to know first if that's actually over.
I believe so, what I will do is I will confirm with Donna, who's on vacation for two weeks, so we won't know, but.
So I don't know if we can transfer from that because that was a special article?
Okay.
So these are, I'll, I'll ask, I've never.
Point, right.
So that will just have to be, if it's, if it's over with, like, and close it out, we won't carry it forward, you know, just go back to free cash.
The way that I. Read the books, which may have been wrong, we were way under in the thirty thousand, right?
That's what I thought too, which is why I was surprised that we needed to, but I'm not sure if we can transfer from that.
Oh, we're. Understood.
Right, right.
Um, but I just wanna make sure. I, I had been keeping track, but, and I thought that we actually had more money in the legal budget, but. It, I think this, we had a busy month of uh, April, I guess, too, didn't help.
April was actually pretty, this is equals year.
Oh, was it?
I think it was March or February.
March, when we were doing the warrant and stuff, which makes sense, but. Alright, I would move to approve the internal transfer of eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars from the grant writing account to legal. For town, which would be, I guess, what's it called in the town council? Retainer still or legal?
Yeah, whatever, it still is the same, that's what you're finding.
Yeah.
I'll say.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll vote yes.
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 Yeah, and that's true.
Sure. This one, yeah. You uh. Does it, I mean. If we're over already for the year, we've only got, what, one more, May and June, right?
May and June.
So we've got another, so we'll have another two bills?
Yes.
Did we underdo the budget for next year?
It's possible, it's just too hard to predict, I mean, we still had things this year and I noticed. I mean, we are getting billed, the insurance company is dealing with like the ongoing litigation. But we still have communications that come to and from town council, so that doesn't help.
But most of the stuff that was on the previous bills wasn't really relevant to that, so.
No, but I mean, all year, we, it's been. We've actually done, I think, a, a fairly pretty good job about using town council judiciously, but. Things come up like the Curtis Road Bridge that the state's paying for and. The Walker lawsuit and they just end up being contacted and spending time on it, and I'm not saying that's the whole. Thing, but it is really hard to predict how much we're gonna use legal, and maybe, I mean, obviously it's too late. For this year to change it, but maybe if we see in February, January, February, March of next year that we're gonna, we're looking to run high and then at that point, I would absolutely.
I think once we have two years worth of data of, and probably looking at number of hours rather than, because at some point the rate will go up. So knowing how many hours we're using on average, you know, because with, with one years, not many years worth when we're coming up with the budget of data, it's hard to know what you're, what you're actually gonna use and. You don't know what the variability is between years because. Different stuff comes up, right? Like, it's not always the same thing, so.
And looking at like the May now meeting is gonna be there for her travel and for her attendance.
Although I think, I thought the attendance was part of the, that general deal, yeah. I thought it was, I don't think we pay her by the hour for that, but we transfer her, right?
She was judging us by the hour, right?
Um, so I think Susan and I had a similar recollection to you and I think what I was thinking about was we were getting. The original meet and greet as part of the engagement.
But not that.
And maybe transportation was coming from. A closer town and not from Wellesley.
Right.
But I could be wrong, I mean, we could look into it, but.
Well, we'll see when the bill comes.
We'll see when the bill comes. Yeah, um, so for tree bids. We just had the two, right?
Yeah.
Tree and number one.
And they're pretty different.
Well, they are, but uh, Fields has five percent year over year.
But it's still much lower than.
Oh, it is, but I just asked him, could you cut the inflation back?
So the reason his went up was because of the big prevailing wage went up. It was like four hundred dollars a day to the. So you've laid an estate for that.
Wow.
Um, yeah, he was cheaper.
He was cheaper in front of all categories.
Well, some, the later ones.
Yeah, but then, but it's the inflation subject, that's it, five percent year over year.
I mean, um, if five percent.
Years two and three are options anyway, so either part of it enough out, right?
Right.
And so what does it mean?
You know.
He's still, he's still a less expensive, less category.
Wha- what's the desirability of doing the optional second and third year? Why aren't we asking for just straight up three-year contract?
Well.
Do, is there a background on that?
Considering the ability to knock down.
That we're just following what we've done in the past and um.
And back before inflation, they were probably taking second and third years. Without thinking about it, and we probably were too. And we got. The short end of the stick.
I'm just thinking that we might wanna think about changing how we look at things in an inflation-rich environment. They may not be willing to do the neither, right? Because they don't wanna have their bottom line cut. So I don't know, it might be that they won't bid on it if it's such a big contract, on the other hand.
There's, you, you're bringing up a good point, there, you know, there's a, there's still uncertainty.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm definitely open to, to bidding out. Or at least looking into bidding out full three-year, full on three-year contract.
But in the meantime, I think John Fields is a much better price than the other guy.
Probably both.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I motion, we accept the John Fields contract.
Second, any other discussion on the treaty contract? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so it's unanimous approval of the John Field contract.
Just for, to clarify, is this one we did when I was a three-year.
Okay.
Oh, we asked for a treaty contract, yeah, the, the bid for this league contract was twenty-six. Oh, okay, so tho- those are like law.
I didn't, so I wanted to just look at it.
Okay.
I thought Jim and I talked about it and said that.
I thought it was optional year two and three.
Previously was, not so many did.
Okay. It's, I, I probably would have looked it up here, it's not, you didn't set it too soon.
Meta grant documents, so did we get the meta grant?
Did.
Great.
Wait, now remind me which one that is, this was on Peter, that. Okay, from solar.
And so we were going to. I mean, at one point, it was for solar consulting, right?
Yes, so Peter is gonna be sending a summary um, to amend the monies that he's using the.
ARPA.
ARPA for.
This was fifteen.
I don't know why this keeps doing this.
But the other, if you don't have the other ARPA, uh, for the playground, they didn't spend what they were originally budgeted.
Um, we gave them a range and they hit the low end of the range.
Okay. But what did we put on the bill sheet, was there not there? My, my point is there, is there more ARPA money there?
Um, kind of.
Kind of.
Yeah, um, the way that it was.
Certainly the money.
Justin. The way that it was, was that. Between fulfilling the whole playground project and the whole pavilion request, or the whole playground request and the whole pavilion request, we were about ten thousand dollars short. And so the board at the time. More or less said, we are going to fund both of these projects, but. Um, at, we're gonna guarantee you ten thousand less than what you asked for, so if it was ninety-eight for the playground, we guaranteed roughly eighty-eight.
Right, okay.
And said the last ten, no, no one's guaranteed the last ten, but we'll leave it open. So the playground actually ended up being almost ten thousand, about eight thousand dollars less than the hot end. Um, but it kinda, at this point, depends on what money we ultimately end up putting into the pavilion or the community center. To, if there's money left, and it depends on if Peter's still planning on spending all of his fifteen.
Yes.
So.
I already asked, I was like, oh, you're gonna hit less, and he's like, no.
So, um.
He's already got a fixed contract with people, he's a woman, that.
Yeah, I'm gonna let him.
So the way Pete, the way Peter explained to me back when he applied for the ARPA funds was, he is going to apply. So the way Pete, the way Peter explained to me back when he applied for the ARPA funds was, he is going to apply for the metagrant, and they kind of fill the same purpose. But he won the ARPA fund so that they could get right on, at one point, they were shooting to be ready for this annual company. Um. That's why we gave them the ARPA, or that's in my mind why we allocated ARPA funds, knowing that there was the metagrant in the background, I didn't realize that we could. Um, now that ARPA funds are in some ways freed up, it sounds like in another way not freed up. But, long story short, the playground came in about eight thousand dollars less than it was.
Budgeted.
Then, less than the high end of the budget. But. That doesn't mean that we have eight thousand.
Because we don't know what's gonna happen at the community center.
Because we don't know what's happened, gonna happen at the community center, it means that. It means that we have, in theory, that eight thousand more for the community center from their lower. But I think there's, in my, from what I understand, talking to Lori, what, um, they're, they are trying to come up with a proposal to the select board, kind of like the playground went out, and they did the bidding, and then they came back to select board with a more concrete proposal. So I don't really know where that's at.
I, I met with the board a week ago.
Yeah.
So we're gonna try to get a document together where they are. They, they met with, uh, Tom, the plumber, and the health inspector, and they've all given, said they would recommend to give them a variance.
Mm-hmm.
And all, but they're trying to, you know, Marcus, uh, Andrews is doing drawings, he's actually done the drawings.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know. So I, they need to organize their thoughts on everything they got going on, and, you know, what I've been suggesting, and they, they're already there. Is that they need like a three to five-year plan, wha- you know, what can we do right now, what are we gonna need down the road? So it's in the pipeline, and it could be discussed and presented to people.
Okay, yeah, so long, long story short, the funds are not necessarily freed up because the playground came in under.
Right, right, that's, I just.
Um, I guess it really hinges now on what the ultimate plan is going forward with the community center. If they run way under budget, then we do free up some funds, if they use up the full extent of the budget, um, that we had initially talked about. They could go, be within that range that we had initially suggested, and then we wouldn't have any freedom.
They're trying to get some of the pricing, you know, the pathway, which you, you know, uh. You can, you know, how, how would you do it on the cost, I think, Mark, Mark's been talking to Mike Roger, the cost and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
Could you do that?
Cool.
So, there's work ongoing, there's.
It's good, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so meta, back to the metagrant, which got us on the ARPA tangent, sorry, um, but I was just curious, cause I remembered they were interrelated. So the metagrant will pay for the beacon consult. Right, that they're doing right now, that, cause that's what ARPA was gonna pay for.
I think that's what he's continuing to use the ARPA for.
What's it gonna do with the metagrant, really?
I didn't really get into it today, so please put it in a summary and we'll give it to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So all he, all he did mention was that the former transportation was looking like the most.
Yeah.
Uh, the best spot to put solar panels.
Rather than buildings?
Yeah, yeah.
So I know he wants to amend his proposal, including the fire company, cause it sounds like they're gonna focus.
Interesting, cause I would have thought that the pavilions got so big, but I guess that we, we struggled with supporters on it?
Yeah, but you start. Yeah, but you, if you start doing multiple buildings, you have a ten burger, and then burgers are very good costing solar, but you're buying like four or five, or you're doing one.
But that one's like right near the phase three, that's why I figured they'd do it.
I'm not that deep into their detail, but.
Cause it has to be near phase three, and my recollection was, running the line was like a million dollars, I was like, what?
Yeah, that's what Jim was concerned about.
A million dollars a mile, yeah.
Yeah, and it's like, but it's, it's back off, cause you gotta go all the way down Curtis Road, so it was a lot of money.
Well, I think at the, I think at the end of the day, it's probably less of what the. Con, what the actual cost is and more, what's the town's portion, based on grants, right? So.
Right, okay.
Um, I would.
I trust them to do the work, I'm just surprised at that.
I would move to accept the metagrant then.
Yes, please, bring on the money.
We'll vote yes, or.
Yes.
Yeah, misapproval.
I don't know, Mickey, is it boring when we all agree all the time?
Pardon?
Is it boring that we all agree all the time?
No, that's okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
You're in order, are you?
Yeah.
Yeah. This one, sure. Um, so the next two, it just goes through, right?
Yep.
The next two items are, wow.
Resignations.
Simmons' resignation, and, uh, Steve Moore's gonna have something in, uh, in the Monory News that says, and. I use the word, sure, yeah, he's, he's closing.
Yeah, I think that's.
Couple days, I just said there's a short application, and the, the select board with input from the finance committee will make the determination.
Yeah, so your resignation is effective June twenty-sixth?
Twenty, yeah, twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth of Monday.
Yeah, cause you, that's when Jeff, uh, Jeff was back at town.
So the question is how long we accept applications for? Um, given that. I know there are already multiple people interested, I don't feel that we need to set a long application period. If it's gonna be in the Monory News, we should certainly run it a little bit into next month, so that if someone sees the Monory News, they have some. Um, time, but also, if we wanna make an appointment before the twenty-sixth, so say, on the twentieth. We would really wanna have them all in the week of the thirteenth or the sixth. So that the finance committee can make some input and some work in the.
Yeah, but it's, you don't have Jeff's, but, cause he's not back, so it's, it basically would be Eileen and me on the finance committee.
Well, at the very least, the select board could make their call, and then the finance committee could look at whichever candidates we vetted. Um, the, at their next meeting, so I'm gonna say we should roll it back just a little bit, right? So if you're, if it's effective, the twenty-sixth, and the news, even though he's putting it to bed, it's not gonna come out for like ten days.
The news comes out around the third, first, or the fourth.
Like, around the first.
Around the first, so Thursday, Friday, people get it over the weekend.
So it depends on if it, if you get it from the mail, because that can be.
I think. Yep.
It can take a while now, and so the sixth seems really tight from the first to the sixth. I, I'd say we should think about the thirteenth, but if the finance committee couldn't even look at it until the twenty-sixth, we could leave it open. Until our meeting, it's like, close it on the sixteenth, and we talk about it on our meeting on the twentieth, and that way, um.
I don't know, it'll be June.
I, I mean, yeah, my, my opinion was, I don't think we're gonna have a shortage of applications. Get the ball rolling, and I didn't realize Jeff wanted to have input, and he's gonna be, I knew he was gonna be gone in June, but I didn't put two and two together that he's gonna wanna have input. So I thought we would try to make the appointment around, I guess, on the twenty-seventh. Um, but we could still have applications due the thirteenth of June.
That's what I'm thinking, that, or you, you could even make applications due the sixteenth, and then we'll, we'll look, that gives us three days to look at them, and we can talk about it on the twentieth.
Yeah.
And, and we'll make our, we'll vet our call and move them on to the finance committee and see what they say.
Yes, but then we have to.
Make our first, we don't have to call the hall, we can, we can, we, you know, winnow down the candidates to who we think are the best choice.
It's anything. So is Jeff gonna be around, um, the twenty-sixth, or you're saying?
I can't decide yet, I don't.
They set the next meeting at the, on the thirtieth.
Yeah, but then he leaves the first week of June, and then he's gone for.
Well, that's why it sets the, the, the May thirtieth, and that he's gonna be on the whole time, right?
I know.
Is he still, he's still home, though?
Yeah, he is, well.
So we, you could email him and ask him if he can be at the, you know, if you guys, the finance committee can meet on the twenty-seventh to finalize that.
Eh, well, we're meeting on the twenty-seventh, so.
Well, we, we make our call the twentieth.
Yeah, but we have to make the appointment.
Ah, okay, right.
So nothing can happen until we do it.
Metagrant, right.
That's why I was looking for them to make input first, because if we send it, if we look at them, send to them and send it back, it's a little bit redundant.
Right.
But, why don't we just say the sixteenth, we'll figure it out, I would have rather done it.
Sure.
Differently, but we're in the spot we're in now, so what if we just say that, um, applications are due on the sixteenth?
I think it's fine, yeah.
Okay, um, so that should be in the news to Steve Moore, with your call.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm gonna see him Thursday morning.
And then. Unless there's any, uh. Unless anyone thinks otherwise, I think we have, people thought official appointment request application, just so that it's all standardized. Um, which is on the website and available on hard copy.
I remember, does that have, ask for relevant experience, it does, right?
Readings for applying relevant experience.
Okay. I'd say, I figured it did, I, I seem to recall that it did, but it was a trust but verified, since you had it up.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and then we will ask for those to be in by Friday, June sixteen.
Do we wanna do this same thing for a tree warden?
No. Um. Again, I mean, I know that there are people who are interested, and I wanna, you know, we're opening it up for the process. So that anyone can apply, and we can consider, but at the same time, right now, we're, without a tree warden, we know that there's at least one person who's interested in doing it. Let's open it up and see who is interested in doing it, I just saw a path, but I thought it was, I saw a bear cup on the way here, so I, at first, I just saw a black thing, I thought it was a bear cup.
Um, can you say who that one person you know who's interested is, or no?
Yeah, because he got a few regular votes, but not enough to win the election.
Okay.
Um, but if we wanna do, I mean, what's the status of tree warding, then? I mean, uh, we don't have a tree warden at all.
Okay.
And we don't need input from the finance committee.
No.
Um, what if we asked? What if we advertise it until Friday the second?
I mean, I won't even be, I, I'm thinking that we can do it on the, on the following week.
Yeah, you have to, you have to wait for those Fridays.
I know, I'm like, so basically, you're saying, let's just take Rick, because there's no way anyone else is even gonna see it.
Well, we'll put it on the town website.
Who looks at the town website? I mean, I look at.
I do.
I mean, I look at the town website when I go looking for something, but I would never be like, oh, you know, I have five minutes, I'm just gonna go check the town website to see if they're looking for anybody.
We can, through the mail, we can do the e, how many people are on the email list?
I mean, you could all, you could all, if you wanted to extend it out, you could temporarily appoint the highway department to act in it until you, you know, maybe do it through June.
I, you know, or I would at least get a say.
Close them at the same time.
Close them at the same time, and, and, you know, I'll email Steve when I get home and ask him to put a notice in that the select board is looking for. Um, people willing to service tree warding, people with relevant tree experience looking to service tree warding.
It's a paid position, isn't it?
Anyone can be tree warden.
Yes, but that doesn't mean anyone should be tree warden. There's a difference between I wanna be and like, you know, an eight-year-old can say, I wanna drive the school bus, but they don't have a license. So if I, if someone's gonna service tree warding, I prefer that they actually have some relevant experience with running trees, it seems sensible to me, I, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like we have someone, it was a, there was one person, it was on, two years in a row, we've had uncontested tree warden.
Mm-hmm.
Election, and then we were trying to find someone, cause he couldn't do it, and we found one person who was willing to do it. And.
I'm not saying Rick isn't qualified, I'm just saying, I feel like we were looking for, I mean, you made some phone calls, I didn't know anyone, but to even ask. And I, I have no idea, maybe there isn't anyone else, and Rick has enough experience to be great, but I don't know, I'd like to give people a chance to come forward. Rather than hoping people just randomly are clicking on, hey, who's Monory?
How many people are on the email list?
Last time I looked at it, there was about five hundred.
Five hundred?
That's a pretty decent list.
The, the town notifications?
Yeah, I can send it out to the community board too.
Yeah, so we can.
Right. All right.
So what if we made him do Friday the second for tree ward?
I don't know, is that, is Rick gonna fill out the one?
It's a wait for, yeah.
It's like, I haven't got the impression that he's like doing his favor.
Friday. I mean, what will happen if we put it off till the thirteenth, or to the, what was it, the sixteenth?
Sixteen.
It just takes a long time, you got the ball rolling, we have uncontested elections, and one person willing to step up to volunteer and do it.
Yeah, but I wouldn't say three people voting for someone is a result.
No, it was like thirty-something.
Oh, it was thirty.
Hang on, let, hang on, let me get the number.
It, it.
It was thirty, I felt like it was.
Grandma was out, but that guy.
It was thirty-something, I had to draw my call that.
It was like what, eighty?
Give me, hang on, give me, I, I may have thirty wrong, but I felt like it was a big number, um.
But it's thirty out of eighty, almost a fifty.
I know, it was thirty out of eighty, I withdraw my objection. I like Rick, don't get me wrong, it's definitely not a personal comment, it's just like.
Miles got fifty, Rick got thirty-three.
All right.
Out of how many?
Eighty-three.
And then there was seven blanks, so eighty and ninety.
And a ninety, he got thirty-three, so he got a, better than a third.
Yeah, more better than a third.
Which is pretty good for someone who was.
Whose name wasn't on there.
Yeah, exactly, for a write-in, I'd say, that's pretty damn good.
Not common enough.
Yeah, right, not commenting up.
Yeah.
Um, do it through June second, do it over.
Okay.
June second, we'll email everybody, please.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, so what's gonna happen is, we are going to solicit finance committee. Uh, applications through Ju- Friday, June sixteenth, and tree warding applications through, through Friday, June second. And then we'll go from there, based on how many, if we receive more than one, we'll just have to. Do what we always do, make decisions.
Exactly. Make decisions, as painful as they can sometimes be. Okay.
Does anyone have any unanticipated business?
I wanted to know, you weren't gonna talk to council about, the, up to, not council, to Wallace.
Yeah.
About process and person, et cetera, do we have an update on that?
Yes, um, let me think about, let me think about, um.
Do we need to have.
If we should talk about that in open meeting.
That's what I was gonna ask.
I'll leave in a minute, so.
Well, no, we can't just do that, um, let's not talk about an open meeting, um, but we're moving forward, yeah.
Okay, K, um, you can, I think, send us privileged communication to just the other select board members recounting what occurred, and we can.
Well, you'll find, I mean, it's not, it's nothing groundbreaking, we're just, we're moving forward, and.
Okay. And we have a point person, and.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, we're moving forward, but i- if I had a big update, I would, I would give.
Okay. It's just that I do need instruction on how to proceed.
Yeah, one in a meeting.
I leave on Saturday morning.
How long are you going?
Till the following Sunday, the fourth.
Okay, yeah, I don't think, none, none of this stuff is really, so, none of this stuff is really, none of this stuff is really urgent.
Muliyabi. We had a month, so that. True, but I think we had a month to fulfill it, and at that point, three weeks of it will cover.
No, the, the, um.
Timely?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, I won't go into it, but let's just say it's not urgent.
It's not a hard title.
It's not a hard, we're not.
Okay.
You going away for a week is not gonna throw a wrench in our plans.
Okay.
And there's things that are being worked out, but yeah, we're, we're moving forward, no.
I just, uh, like, that's fine, when I get back, I need instruction on, as to who is going through my email, including if it's me, and.
Yeah, so.
How I should, what I should do with it if it is me, so I know how to do that.
Yeah, just go on vacation, uh, you're gonna be back on Sunday the fourth.
Okay. Correct.
And you.
And I'm not really particularly available.
You're not very reachable, you're not.
Not easily, no, cause it's international, and I don't really.
Okay, then. Then, yeah, I mean, it's gonna, things are gonna take.
Yeah, I don't wanna pay for all my emails.
Things are gonna take time anyway, so don't worry about it.
Okay. I mean, if something was an emergency, I don't know what it would even be, like, you guys are gonna take care of it.
Yeah.
The only thing I wanted to bring back up was the community center I talked about, they met with Don, the board of health, and the plumbing inspector, and they're gonna recommend to the state that they get the variance.
Yeah.
But Melissa and I talked today, did we need to vote on that, they would recommend, accept the fact that they're gonna apply for the variance, and Don would see that in the notes. And then they could, uh.
Did we ever get, did we ever obtain this, whether they can be, for lack of a better word, embezzled, to sit down on the half of this one?
Uh, I don't, I don't know how that process works, but I think.
Someone was gonna reach out to council.
We did discuss it last week, I didn't get, I didn't reach out to Don or get any answers, she's gone.
Gone, right.
In a month, we could go through other people, but it is nice when she kind of has the knowledge of the town.
Do we know when they're thinking to go?
Yeah, they wanna go sooner than later, so they can put their tactics together.
I think either way, I mean, can we do it next week?
And I.
Because either way, I know that the select board can do, can make decisions about that property.
Right.
And if the question is whether it can be delegated, if we, if the select board in this instance can make a decision, and we don't need to worry about delegating, but it would be good to know going forward.
Right.
What we can delegate and how.
And I, I'm happy to say that I, I'm content for them to go and seek the. And I, I'm happy to say that I I'm content for them to go and seek the variance on behalf of the community center and the select board. So I, I will give a yes vote to whatever comes up in my absence regarding that, because if they wanna go ask for the variance, I don't see a downside for the town, though.
So you wanna wait until next week, then?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the variance says, we we talked about it a month or two ago with the community center, maybe more, um.
Variants are basically asking you, for example. With, I don't know what their time period is, I think two to three to five years, that they would be a bathroom, an additional bathroom at the community center.
Yeah, I'd like to see that before making a decision on that, that's all.
Okay.
Um.
Just started GoFundMe page, just after that. You know what, if we put a box in there and ask people to put donations every time they came to an event there, so that if you get another bathroom, like that after a year, it'd be a fair amount of money.
I thought you were.
They have coin operated toilets in Europe. That'll save them the next bathroom.
Remind you to tell you.
I haven't seen where those were going.
I'll add it.
Yeah.
It was something.
Yeah, yeah, it could be a tough one.
I tried calling it.
Anything else, comments and questions from public?
Nope.
Yes.
Minutes.
Um, minutes, uh.
Minutes, goodbye.
Five seventeen.
I would never blame you. Bye.
This is the regular one and that's the. Exactly, right, okay. Do, oh, do we have any information regarding whether the playground report can be given away? Right, I probably need to ask more, so that.
Yeah, we don't, or I don't.
Okay. Okay. Did you manage to find anything out about, um, whether we can give away the old playground equipment?
I did not yet, okay. It's on my list. It may not be.
I've been working on the math work, so I think that. Yeah, I think so, when's it due?
Next Friday.
So, or just delete that sentence, that one, yeah, yeah.
That one. Yeah.
Delete that one. Um, okay, so what's your, what's your thing with these?
That was it.
Oh, okay. That was easy. Okay. Looks good.
I got one more thing. Do you wanna try to do before?
We'll vote on the minutes.
Yeah, oh, you want to do the.
Yeah. Uh, motion approved the minutes of May seventeen.
Second.
Any other discussion, yes?
Yes. Frank?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just initial that copy here, so Melissa. And then, like, we do have the executive session minutes.
Do we have to go into executive session to do it?
I think we do.
Yeah, I'd rather.
Well, now that you have them, I can send them to everybody with the changes.
Yeah.
And then we'd have to, we'd have to wait until I got back or, you know, not, I don't know.
Well, the other thing we could do is. If you're open to. Just for these minutes, delegating. To me, the. Approve of, um, finalizing. Which I would. I mean, I already put down kind of my. Changes.
Right.
Um, so it'd be really just if there were. Two, like competing changes, just kind of picking one.
I trust you, I, we've always been, we've always easily come to agreement on changes and we're usually trying to change the same things for the same purpose.
Well, and and I think.
I absolutely would delegate that.
For other things, let's just do it for one time, if that works for you.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant, for, for this.
Um. Does that work for you, Frank?
Yes.
Okay, so I will. Get a final copy to you, Melissa, um, and.
I'll give it to you with all the changes.
Yeah, and I will say that if there's no objection, this is not for public release.
I would agree.
Okay, um, you have one of the things, I.
Yeah, um, the finance committee, you know, with Jeff leaving and there's some things on the list to do. I'm gonna try and put on, Eileen could do some of it in the month of June. With it, I talked to Eileen after I talked to you late this afternoon and, um, you know, they're gonna have a meeting next Tuesday and maybe. I thought maybe we could have a joint finance, a short finance select board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Sort of give her some direction.
Mm-hmm.
On what to do, you know, cause if, if, you know, you talked last week about a proposal for zero-based budgeting. If that could be started, Kevin, you know, what did that look like, what did the training look like and give them some direction. There would be, you know, there's a, there's a, you know, whole month there.
So I'm open to that.
Shouldn't be waiting till you have the whole board to make sure everybody's on board with that?
Well, technically, well, you would have the whole board there, you just have to remember, but it'd be the, not only the zero-based budgeting, the capital policy. Stuff like that that they could, she could. You know, fine tune it, seek input from it.
Well, cause we're missing Susan next week and then Jeff for like three more weeks or four more weeks.
Four weeks.
And then we don't really have a finance committee, because we just have Eileen.
And myself.
And you, but you're on the select board.
But technically that doesn't, like, legally, he doesn't have enough stuff there.
I know, but, um, he did.
But not effective till, not effective till after that, so he can serve legally, but the capacity is until his resignation, it's not like he's a lame duck, I suppose.
Yeah. Yeah. He can, but I mean, we're not. The point, you know, if we have a joint meeting, we're only getting that much more of a joint meeting than just having just a select board meeting.
Right. Uh, yeah.
But I am open to. Meeting with Eileen, I think that's something that we've done, I think we did last year and maybe the year before, uh, maybe not the year.
Jeff would be here next week.
It's good to keep the finance committee. To keep a, an open lane of communication between select board and the finance committee. Because when it goes off the rails in January or February, you have to.
But well, I, I, I think I give them the assignments to, you know, you talked about it here, doesn't mean you're not gonna change the capital policy or the discussion about the zero. You gotta think some of this stuff through.
If, if nothing else, I think the priority from my perspective at the moment would be, um, really fleshing out what zero-based budgeting would look like from a departmental basis. What, what's, what would be expected of the departments, what training would be needed, who's gonna provide it, how it's gonna get done. Because if, if we realistically want that to happen, we need to do the trainings soon, not, not in November, right?
You can't do that.
No, so, um, it seems like the, that's the priority that's emergent is to clarify what that would look like and how it's gonna happen on the ground, you know, boots on the ground.
So let's just say in general, we can probably schedule a joint meeting or we can just start brainstorming, I mean, we're not gonna approve. Fire policies or anything, but with short, I would like to have, uh, the new finance committee member and all of both groups as much as possible present. Um, but if, yeah, we can have a, a joint meeting.
No, what's the, what do you think is the timing of the joint meeting?
So we're meeting at six.
Okay.
Probably a short meeting, uh, depending, so when do they meet?
Five thirty. At the community center or the library, I'm not sure, should, community center.
Well, then maybe they can get in their cars and come here.
I, I have to get my car from there.
Yeah, it's just gonna be you.
I was just gonna say, you guys could just meet here next week.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll be, I, I'm not gonna be here, but I trust, I, you know, I will watch the, the video when I get back, but I, I trust. You guys to be rational, everybody's on the same page, we all wanna do a better job of everything, right, so.
Well, you're not approving anything.
I know, we're just talking about how.
You're just giving ideas of how to propose something.
Direction.
Exactly, and I have no idea how to train people to use a base budgeting, cause, well, I understand it conceptually, but I have no idea how it actually happens, so.
Just my opinion from the comments that I've gotten from the department, I think, well, the first step you need to do is talk to the department heads, because. I think what you are expecting and what's reality are two different things.
And what maybe, what's reasonable to ask them to do.
And reasonably, yes.
Right.
Alright, well, we'll meet with them and brainstorm and discuss and, uh. Until then, uh, I'm with adjourned.
I'll say.
Oh, well, yes.
Yes.
Unanimous meeting adjourned at seven twenty-fourth evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.